At six o'clock, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. My name is Joe Malone. I'm the presiding officer. And at this time, I look around the room, we have four board members, five board members present in the room, and two on Zoom, so we've got it for them. And I would ask that you join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer and reflection. Invite our student to read our vision statement, mission statement, and goals.
The vision statement: empowering and inspiring all students to achieve their full potential. The mission statement: Wimberley ISD is dedicated to excellence in education that fosters a culture of kindness and respect, creates lifelong learners, and empowers students to make a positive impact in their community. We believe that everything that we do should help ensure the success of all of our students. As educators, we maximize class time in an engaging and challenging way. Our teachers are personally invested in our students. Students in Wimberley are committed to community service, and the community supports students in return. A quality public Wimberley ISD education drives the future of a successful Texas. As a district, we strive to meet the needs of the whole child academically, emotionally, and socially. Wimberley ISD provides the foundation to create engaged citizens who will become lifelong learners. All our children, parents, faculty, and staff should be treated with kindness and respect. We are committed to excellence in all we do. Wimberley ISD goals: achieve excellence in education, foster a culture of kindness and respect, create lifelong learners, make a positive impact in our community.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to take a look at our agenda here and move a couple items around. We have our folks here that are going to present our audit report. So I'd like to move that item number four ahead of the table report and public hearing on that matter.
Yes.
Proceed.
Thank you. President Malone, board members, Superintendent York, and district administrators. My name is Robert Gutolia, and I'm with the District's Interpreting Auditor, Singleton Clark and Company. Pleasure to join you again. I was not here last year. Jack Clark is here at my place. I'm trying to keep things brief. Generally, every year, we look at three items. I've got one additional item to add to the list. So we'll take a look tonight at the type of opinion that was issued, whether there were any findings or question costs noted during the audit. The calculated reserves and the ending fund balance of the general fund. And then last, I don't want to take a look at quickly is the general fund budget. Like if the pages, I think that helps to reinforce some of those points. I realize that there are two members on the company. So I'll call out the hard copy page and the report page. I don't know the P F page numbers, unfortunately. I'd like to start this page 107. Second to last page of the report. On page 107, we've got the schedule of findings and question costs. It's broken down into three sections. The first section deals with, at a high level or very high level, the audit itself. Section two deals with primarily state and local matters, and then section three is federal matters. You'll see at the top of the section of the page, the first item in the section mentioned is the type of opinion that was issued for the year. The district received a clean opinion, otherwise referred to as unmodified. That's what you want to receive. It basically means after having performed the audit and assembling this report, that in our opinion, it's fairly stated and presented in accordance with general accepted accounting. Moving down the section, there are some questions that are being asked as far as where things identify during audits, such as were there any material weaknesses noted? The answer is no. Were there any deficiencies noted? No. And then the last question in that section is whether there are any instances of material noncompliance noted. The answer is no. Moving down through the section, given that the district expended more than 750,000 in federal programs for the year, we were required to perform a single audit, whereby we singled out major programs. The major program for the year was cafeteria and test controls and compliance related to that program as they are extrapolated to the, all of the federal programs that are dealt with at the district. And you'll see that there were no weaknesses identified or deficiencies related to that program or federal programs at all, and the opinion was unmodified as well. Turning the page to 109. So if we had identified any state or local findings, they would be listed in section two. And as you can see there, there were no findings identified for the years ended in 2020 as well as 2019. Had there been a finding last year, it would be repeated here with the current status. And then moving into section three, given that the district had to have a single audit for the year, there were no findings or question costs identified with the federal programs for the years ended August 31st, 2020 or 2030. So that takes care of items one and two. Does anyone have any questions about the type of opinion or any potential findings or negative outcomes related to audit, which were not identified? If you could slip to page 26. So on page 26, we've got the income statement at a fund level for the district. The column that we're interested in is the leftmost, the general funds column. General fund is the primary operating fund in the district. So what we do annually is take the total expenditures for the fiscal year under audit, divide by 12, come up with an average monthly amount, and then divide that figure into the ending unassigned balance and the general fund to basically determine how long does the district function without receiving another dollar revenue. As a firm, we usually recommend between three and six months. So when you do the math, total expenditures in the general fund for the fiscal year under audit was 26 million change. You divide that by 12, you come up with 2.17 million. The district was fairly consistent year over year. Last year, the amount was 2.1. Your expenditures are fairly close year over year, at least in ratio. Last year, if you do the math, you divide that figure into ending unassigned balance, you come up with 3.9. So as of the last fiscal year, so August 31st, 2019, the district had just a hair under four. When you do the math this year, and if you'll turn the page quickly to 24, so just went over to the balance sheet. The ending unassigned balance is the third figure from the bottom in the leftmost column, that 8.76 million. When you divide up the district's average monthly amount, the 2.17 million, into that, you get 4.04. So more or less the same as it was last year. I believe there was a discussion that was started while we were in the field about potentially committing or assigning fund balance. If the district would like to do that, I would say that you safely could commit or assign one month. We're going to try and stick to three months. It's just an earmark. To commit takes board action on and off. Assignment is generally done at a business office level. So if you've got 2.17, and you want to stay at three, as far as what's in unassigned, I think you probably could commit or assign 2.17 million. And we have that as an agenda item tonight to do so.
What is the benefit of doing that?
There's been some discussion lately about the state looking at fund balance. And so if you were going to draw a line somewhere, and I don't know where it's going to be, but in assessing whether you have excess fund balance. And so if we say three at a minimum, and I don't know what's going to happen, it might be prudent to consider earmarking a portion of fund balance in excess of three months.
Okay. Do we? Do we need to remember that figure, or is it written down?
No, it is. It is in my documentation. And I think that we've shared that with you all.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Ask to be... Oh, there's so many terms. Committed would be the perfect term. All right.
Restricted, no. Committed, something the board is going to... So does anyone have any questions about that analysis, quick analysis related to fund balance as far as?
I have a question, and this is great.
Sure.
So you're saying, and I apologize, I can't really, I'm just having to go on what you're saying because I was not emailed a copy of the audit, so I don't have it in front of me. But for the purposes of the fund balance conversation and the item that we're going to be voting on later, so you're saying that it's possible that we might want to commit some of those funds in case the legislature takes some action that would make that advantageous to us. Is there any reason why we have to do that now versus waiting until we actually know what the legislature is going to do? Taking action that month?
It's up to the district as far as you can do this as often as you like, and it basically is board action on and board action off. And so you'll have control of it going forward. But there, there's no rush as far as a real need other than in kind of thinking this is something that may happen. But certainly, if the district has a wish list related to things that are forecasted as something that you're going to go out and buy, it doesn't hurt to kind of carve those items out of unassigned, which really doesn't have a specific use attached to it.
Okay, thank you.
Lori, that financial should have been in your packet online if you're looking at it. It's under, Tracy, is it under the extra tab? Or how do you see it? I can't tell how y'all see it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm online now, but I don't see it.
Under your extra tab. Did you see that?
I'm just going through the agenda.
I'm sorry.
But there's no attachment.
Do you see the proposed general operating committed fund balance attachment?
Yeah, I see that one, but I don't have the actual audit document.
Did you log in as you? Are you looking at the public one, Lori?
I'm logged in as me, and I'm not seeing it anywhere.
I'm looking at the one that you emailed us, the link that you emailed us a couple days ago, Dottie.
I mean, Wayne's proposal is there, but the actual audit itself is, I'm not finding it. Because I have a copy in front of me, so I wasn't able to report.
I put it under, there's a tab called extra. That's where I put it, but I don't know how y'all see it. But it's on there, and it is available to, it's available to voting members.
Lori, if you go to your meetings page and then expand January 25th, there is a link for extras.
I'm sorry, this is new programs. It's kind of...
The date in the meeting is a hyperlink. Click on that hyperlink, and then it'll open up below.
Okay, I think I might have found it.
Any big items are under there, Lori, like the, I think the taper is under there, the check register, anything that's, you know, 20 pages or more, I put it under that extra tab.
Okay, thanks, Dottie.
So the last thing I just wanted to take a look at quickly was the district's budget to actual analysis. It's exhibit C3. It's on page 29. So every year, we take a look at your budgets, the ones at least that have to be presented as part of this packet. And to the extent that there are variances, negative variances related to expenditures, they're potential findings. It basically means the district spent money that wasn't appropriated to a specific function. And so function 91, which is recapture, you'll see if you move across, it's actually the rightmost column that shows the variance. There's a variance of about $400,000. And so we did not, or I didn't interpret that as a finding because that amount didn't change until September 1st. So you went from $2 million to $2.4 million on the payment ledger analysis as of September 1st. And so I didn't hold the district accountable as such because you couldn't have amended the budget, you know, for $400,000 if you didn't know. To a certain extent, you're supposed to be able to project that. I'm not sure why the state didn't move the figure, you know, until it did, but I didn't consider it a finding. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. If it's mentioned when the letter comes back that they would have liked it to have been a finding, I did put a footnote in the subsequent event. It's the last footnote in that section that deals with it as far as what the logic was for not considering a finding. It's an involuntary transaction as far as that you have to pay into the system. It's not something that's even really appropriated, so I did not consider it a finding. Before I ask for questions, I just would like to take a minute to thank the board for allowing us to serve as the district's auditor. And considering that it's board appreciation month, thank you for your service. I'd also like to thank the business office for all their help. Moises, I know he's not here, and Emily and Rhonda. Thank you very much for all of your help in conducting the audit. Certainly a large effort or undertaking. Does anyone have any questions related to anything that I discussed or anything else related to the audit? I forgot to mention that you'll need to accept at some point in time. I'm not sure if the secretary is here, but I did bring a, there's a loose certificate that I brought.
Thank you, Robert. We appreciate your presentation at this time. If there's any questions. Okay, well... Any motion on this, Doc?
Yes.
Don't move.
Say go. All right, we've got a motion and second. Further discussion. It's like we got, did you approve it there on Zoom?
I'm going to abstain because I haven't had a chance to read it. I just discovered it on the system.
And approval. Okay, so that's six approved and one abstained. She passes. Thank you very much, Robert. Have a great rest of the evening. We appreciate all your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do you need to take that?
I'm taking secretary's.
Hey, Dottie.
Yeah.
In the consent agenda, we have a resolution. We have to read the resolution.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
You have in the past.
We can do it either way. I mean, I don't mind if you want to read it or if you want to make a rotation in a minute.
My understanding is that when we make a resolution, it has to be read into the minutes from the public. It's in a package. That's what I was asking. Do we have to do that?
What do you like? We did the Joe stuff in the future. I said I'll record it, so we'll have to...
Up until tonight, you want to give me G and D?
Yeah, there we go.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you so much.
Hi, thank you.
I'm going to need you to read a resolution into the record.
I normally do that, and I'll just let you do it.
Good at that. All right, good. So we're going to go back to our agenda, and we're going to move over to item number two, which is our public hearing on the Texas Academic Performance Report, also known as the paper report. I believe that's going to be presented by Mr. York and Ms. South.
Thank you. This is our annual taper report. Our taper report is, and this is going to actually... I know.
It all counts right here.
Yes, it does. And this was working like a few minutes ago. We just put new batteries in as well.
That's the problem?
Glad to. Lauren, we'll just let you, we'll just let it. Sorry. I'm sorry to the public and everybody who's waiting on this. The Texas Academic Performance Report is pulled together each year, and it has a wide array of information in it. A big piece of this is actually star and end of course data from, not this past year because we did not have that due to COVID, but it will have, this includes year before last's star and E O C information. So a lot of this, Lauren, when we did taper last year, you saw these scores. We have put them together in graph charts so that you could see them just at a glance because when you're looking at what we sent you, those small percentages and numbers, that can be very time-consuming looking line to line to see what all of that means. Jordan, you want to flip it? There we go. The taper can be accessed several different ways. You can go to the T E A website and put in T A P R. It'll bring up this page right here. You can look at this year's information. You can go back, scroll, and do many previous years as well. You can look at the results via district or by individual campuses. Alan will also be posting this on our website, and we'll include this presentation with the slides as well. And then we will have hard copies that people, if they choose, can come to the libraries or to the offices and look at those reports.
Can we get rid of that top section there?
Well, he's there screen.
That's okay.
All right. Due to COVID-19 and the state rating of not rated because we were declared a state of disaster for all campuses and districts, we will be referencing last year's accountability reports. But things that you will notice that are new will be our previous graduation rate for last year and our attendance rate, which is excellent. New pieces to the taper this year. If you go online and you're looking at it, there are a lot of, if you look at it on the web version, there are ways that you can, or links that you can click on that actually explain each piece and actually dig into the data. And that's probably not what the general public wants to do, but it is very useful for our teachers and our administrators because we look at the data, we disaggregate everything from specific demographic groups all the way down to individual students so that we know where we need to go with remediation, accommodations, acceleration, intervention, those sort of things. That's how we can best group kids, to put them in tutorial-type situations to help them get what they need to be on grade level and beyond.
The new S A T A C T scores are reflected in this report, and... So we've already stated this, special ed did meet requirement, which is good.
I have this page in there just so that you, as a board, can see where we pulled different information out of the taper that we're going to be talking about this evening. This is how you read the report. And I know that this is very small print, but this is kind of just a sample. We just took a group. This is eighth grade reading and meeting approaching grade level. We just wanted you to see the different demographics, the state ratings, the region ratings or percentages, the district. And then you break it down into demographics. We have the different ethnicities, and then we have our different special populations, special ed, eco-disadvantaged, E L, English language learners. And that's what it looks like. If you had the opportunity to pop open the taper report that we sent out, you'll see that pattern of reporting on the grid on basically each and every page. Any group, yeah, any group that has less than 25 students in it, they will not put percentages out there because those groups are small enough that you, it might identify a specific segment of kids. And they're so easily identifiable, so they pull back on anything that is less than 25 kids. This right here is a chart that represents all those percentages of students that passed grade level or above. And I believe this one is for reading right here. And if you look at grade three, the dark represents all. The light blue lines are Hispanic population. The orange or white, the next line over, kind of black, is just special ed. Eco dis is that kind of medium blue, and then the burgundy is E L Ls. And this is just a helpful tool for, again, teachers and principals to look at, intervention teachers to look at. We can actually drill down in a lot of the reports that we have in Ed for you and find the specific kids and what their grades are. Yes, Ken?
I don't want to take a lot of time, but when you have E L L and Hispanic, are those numbers counted twice? Are they separated now?
Yes, those students actually count twice. And there's probably more Hispanic than the E L population. The E L fits in within the population, but also in our English language learners. It's not just Hispanic. We've got Peruvian. We've got...
It was Russian at one time.
We still have that this year. We have four, four or five different groups of kids that actually test.
I know it was different languages, but I was just curious if that was a double count.
So are teachers really like the graphic representation? Because they can follow like a fourth grade to next year's fifth, to next year's sixth, and you can just automatically see the progress here because it's all about meeting that next grade level. This menu bar above is, yeah, so I'm pretty sure this is reading.
Yes, it is reading. I have the little chart right here. Something...
Does that help with your gaps as well?
Yes, it does with the achievement gaps. But since you mentioned it, I just want to put this out there that, you know, kiddos may be Hispanic, E L, low socioeconomic, at risk. There's some kiddos that count for us five or six different ways. Their scores are sitting within, you know, those different populations, so that's true. The next... This is level two. When you meet, you're kind of like the approach is passing. Meets grade level is the next level up. And so this percentage of kids, we just made charts for all of them.
Each area.
For each area, and it's kind of hard to understand them from just glancing at them at a distance. Well, you want to just kind of flip through these and get to the ones where it shows the comparison with the... Well, you want to just kind of flip through these and get to the ones where it shows the comparison with the state in the region?
Absolutely. This is mathematics. That was approaches. This is meets. This is end-of-course math, which is Algebra I. It does include eighth grade, by the way. This is our meets level. This is science, grades five and eight. That's approaches. This is meets. This is end-of-course biology, approaches, meets. So we've selected all of these different grade levels, social studies, approaches, meets.
Can we say something about the meets right quick?
Oh, absolutely.
Because we have such a big percentage of kids that do approach the grade level, that are actually in that category because most of our kids do pass. So it's a challenge to the teachers and administrators to get the kids that are at that passing level up to the next criteria so that they can meet or master the following year. We don't just strive for that bottom tier. We want them in the second or third tier.
In fact, this meets category is, well, we can, we always call it tier one, tier two. So this is tier two. This is what our teachers really focus on, probably more so than approaches. And yet our ultimate goal, of course, is to at least make sure that they're advancing to the next grade level. So we have all these different charts. The teachers are continually using these, especially as we stated, the meets tier.
Can I ask one more question? Are the numbers on the left percentages or actual numbers of students or?
Percentages.
Percentages, yes, sir. And if we're going too quick, we can, I mean, we've got some bar graphs that compares with the state and the region and everything else. So, hey, if we're going too quick. Okay, so writing. You know, we've been told for a couple of years, the writing's going away. What's going to happen with the writing is it's going to be part of the reading assessment.
Starting in 22, we think.
In 22, 2022. So there's meets and writing. And our teachers work so hard in writing. And I will never say that a teacher looks forward to STAR or EOC at all. However, during the 1920 school year, we had implemented some things. The teachers had really busted their tail and bam, March 13th, school year's over. And so that's kind of added to the frustration of the teachers because we'd put all this in place. But we can do our own benchmarking. And our benchmarking is showing that our kids have really done well and really advanced. And so, you know, I'm not going to say we don't need STAR and EOC. I'm just going to say that we use benchmarking instead, our own teacher-generated test. These charts, I think, are just as important. State, dark blue, region, medium blue, and then the light blue is the district. So Dee, this is STAR.
That's all grades, all subject levels. So this is everything in the mix. You can see that Wimberly is above the state and region with all grades, all subjects. I could use the pointer maybe.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Hey, Joe, can I ask a question real quick?
May I?
Um, Dwayne or Dee, do we set internal goals? Like looking at these type of grading mechanisms, you know, like where we set internally where we really hope to be for our kids in these different categories?
Absolutely. Yes, yes, we do. We have, it's called student learning objectives. And every year, the teachers, that's part of their evaluation. And they put together either individual classrooms or sometimes if you're on a grade level and you're doing a subject area, you'll put together student learning objectives and do it class-wise, but also do it for individuals as well. And so, yes, yes, sir, there are very good goals.
And in my superintendent report, I mentioned the GIST meetings. That's what these are all about, are these individual meetings that all of our staff are having for every single kid, whether they're high performing or low performing. And we're setting expectations at that level for that child throughout the year.
This is kind of the 100,000-foot level of what that looks like, Dwayne, right? And y'all are doing, and my question being more on the, on the, you know, internal district goals and the kids' goals, that's being done on more individual-type basis?
Yes.
And in a generic way, that's what our campus improvement plans are all about, too. We take all this data. We don't just use STAR and EOC, thank goodness. We use our own benchmarks because it's very specific to individuals. And so that's where our individualized plans per student are generated, developed.
Question, too, in the same vein there. So since this is really not, you know, a year-old data and we're just kind of rehashing it, I'm assuming because we have to, because the state mandates us to do that. But going, you know, is there a way we can get a look at data from our own internal benchmarks for math and reading and those things that I know we do at all the grade levels? Can you guys prepare something like that that we can see, you know, maybe next month, that can compare us to actually last year to this year? You know, I mean, the actual, so we can get some sort of indication of how we're doing?
Progress. So as I've, so when school just ended, March 13th, and as we've been talking about STAR and EOC for the last couple of years, if you'll remember, we had two faculty members come in from Jacob's Well. They gave you information regarding our own benchmarks. It might be a task that, you know, we maybe could get ready for next month. But let me talk to the administrative.
For a couple of months, whatever. I mean, I'm just looking at, you know, high level, like grade by grade, kind of tracking, you know.
Sure.
Just so we can see where, you know.
We'll definitely have that discussion with our admin team.
I would just add that though some of that information might be helpful and could maybe be called, you know, and a report could be developed, I would be careful as to how much additional work I want to place on our teachers and our administrative team in trying to put something like that together, knowing that the entire state is really in the same situation. And I don't, I don't think we're losing any ground academically. And then eventually the reporting and all that will catch up. I just, I don't know if I want to task you with, you know, trying to develop all of this additional information. I mean, what do you, what do you think of that, Lori?
I mean, I'm assuming that this is data that we kind of have access to that, that may be already aggregated on a computer somewhere that can just be pulled up and put together and maybe it can just be emailed out to us or something. I don't know. I mean, I'm not looking to create a lot of work at all as well. But I do feel like it is our, you know, job to look at those things and we don't really have a good way to do that this year. And that might be a way that we could.
Well, and part of the thing, too, is it's been difficult in assessing kids equally across the board because we have at-home learners and we have in-person learners. And so teachers have really taken a different stance on how they are doing interim assessments throughout the course of the year. In fact, a lot of the assignments have been task-oriented as opposed to specific tests. You know, for high school and junior high, I think across the board, we did not do semester exams for many different reasons at this point. But yes, there are some ways that we could get that data. We are not requiring every subject area, every grade level to report the same. So it will be interesting feat to bring all of those together. And I'm not sure that we could do it in a month. But, you know, we could definitely get a feel for, from the campuses as to where they feel that the majority of their students gains are. Are their kids going to gain at least one year by the end of this school year? We have information like that that could probably be put together by March.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking to, I mean, things like Reading Plus and Khan Academy and whatever they use for math at the elementary level. And, you know, I mean, to use those, you know, that, those data points from, you know, a year ago to now and see, you know, see how we're doing. That's all I'm saying. I'm just trying to find some way that we can look at something academic. Thanks.
Not only are we using that as an annual benchmark, but now that we have started receiving more students back from remote and we are seeing a few more gaps than we had expected, you can imagine the benchmark that a teacher does on a daily basis. And it might not be a written test. It could literally be in a small group, reading group, assessing what, you know, where they're at. So there's so many different ways that we measure student progress, but no problem with, with asking. But I do appreciate Joe's, I really do appreciate Joe's comment about, you know, where we're at.
Okay, well, just something to consider, maybe it's not even until, you know, June or something. But just, you know, that's some indication of how we're doing. Thanks.
So this is math. And once again, our district is above state and reason, region. Oh, you've taken over now, I guess. Now this isn't.
How can this work so well?
I know. We've done it for a couple of different groups. Yeah. Funny, okay, go ahead.
All right, so this is writing. And then I'm, we're very excited about this because we were concerned about fourth and seventh grade writing. And to know that we have far exceeded state and region level performance is really good. Here's our science. We're continually working on science. But once again, we're above state and region.
I want to notate that on writing. A couple of years ago, I know that was an area of concern. And seeing that much of a gain is really awesome.
And we were asking for a 5% gain. And I think that we ended up with an 8% to 9% gain in that. But then in some, with some of our students, it was between a 10 and 15% increase. And so.
I noticed that there's been a real effort, just, you know, with my kids being in different grades and stuff, of having them write across all different subjects, even, you know, math and science. And some of the subjects where you traditionally don't do a lot of writing, we've done a lot of that. So that's great. That's outstanding.
That's great. Hey, Joe, I have a, I have a quick question. Remind me, Dwayne, when you say the region, are we speaking geographically? Are we talking about our kind of like, like-sized school districts in the, in the area?
No, we're talking about region 13.
I don't remember exactly if that's like geography or just schools of our size that are in central Texas.
Not size, all schools in region 13.
Okay, thank you, Dwayne.
Okay, here we have social studies. Once again, performing above state and region. And now, this is, this is really critical. When we talk about academic growth scores, the main reason why we went from a 92 to a 93 and some people might say, oh, wow, one point, that's huge. That is huge. When you get to that 88th percentile, to move up just one percentage point is huge. But this is why we improved, is that we're showing more students progress at a one-plus-year level. And that's really the reason why our score went up a point. So just wanted to make that point. This is reading and math, fourth grade.
Well, I was going to comment that the different segments of population are pretty equal across. It's not that we have huge dips. We have a few. And so a principal or teacher would look at these and say, oh, that's the population that I need to work with for this particular subject area. And then there's ways that we have in our data where you can drill down to those specific kids, pull them out and look at all the different ways that they count. Okay, they may be of this race. They may be in this population, in this population, in this population. And because we're Title I school, we don't fund, we're not, we're not district-wide Title I, but we get funds for kids and we have to pick our priorities. We have to choose the most needy ones. And so that's kind of where our efforts are in terms of using our intervention teachers with those. But this is a way that our teachers can see and drill down and figure out which populations need the most help.
So this is fifth grade reading and math. We go to sixth grade reading and math. Seventh. Eighth. And remember, math at the eighth grade is broken up into Algebra I plus eighth-grade math. And now we're starting our end-of-course exams, English II and Algebra I. Algebra I, that does include our eighth-grade kids. And this is all grades, both subjects. And this is all grades, ELA and reading. Math. Okay, so this slide is about attendance. So let me take five seconds to kind of update you. I think I did this in my July report, I mean, my January report. But sometimes it's hard to write it out other than explain it. We are minus 22 kids in the district from last year. We talked about that. What would, what would COVID do to our enrollment? That was going to be equivalent between 400,000 to 500,000, probably closer to 400,000 in additional Robin Hood. But here's where we made up the difference. Our attendance rate has gone from our average 96% to 98%. And because our attendance rate rose, even though we lost the kids, we are fixing to make up that difference in Robin Hood. Exactly what that amount is, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. This is a moving target. If you go into Moises's office, we have a whiteboard. And every month, we're, you know, we're racing enrollment. We're putting in the most recent enrollment, attendance rate. So we're monitoring this really almost every three weeks. So anyway, our attendance rate right now is about 98%. Do you even know the exact, Emily? It's 98-something. But anyway, we're very fortunate.
Dwayne, can I ask a question? Do you attribute the attendance increase to the, basically the ability of kids to log in online? I mean, I'm assuming the online option is helping kids to get.
Oh, absolutely. You've, you, you hit it on, on, you know, I just hope that moving forward, that the state will allow a child to go on remote whenever they just have a, an illness where they can stay at home, get well, but then also participate in their class subjects. I mean, this could be a huge option for all students. Just remember, that means less in Robin Hood and possibly more in state funding. So whether or not they're willing to go there, I don't know. But yeah, you brought up a good point. You're exactly right. It's because remotely our kids, and you can find, a high school kid can be all, was all three. Maybe period one, they were person-to-person. Second period, they were synchronous. But then fourth period, they were asynchronous. Well, we've gotten rid of asynchronous, but we're still allowing our kids to do person-to-person and synchronous for a tenant rate. But the main reason is we're seeing all these gaps and we feel like it's important. However, we can engage these kids, at whatever level we can engage these kids, I could. these kids academically, we've got to get caught up from March 13. Didn't mean to get off on a soapbox. I'm sorry.
Okay. We just included this as a, a way that you can view a lot of data comparing the state, region, and district and all the different demographics here. That actually has the attendance rate, 96.2 and 96.4 for the previous year. Again, like what Mr. York said, we're going to be in the 98s, hopefully for this year. Here's our annual dropout rate. You can see that the state rate is almost 2%. The Region 13 rate is about a percent and a half. The district doesn't have a bar because the district was at 0% for dropouts, which is awesome and incredible. And we would like for our bar to be invisible for many, many years. Yeah. This is WISD Class of 2019 College Ready Graduates, and it breaks it out into demographics. And we will tell you that since that time, we've done a lot of increasing in our high school coursework. Part of this right here are, is a reflection of CTE and the opportunities they have to take a full four-year program across the board. And so we have, you know, we're two years beyond this. The scores are going to be up. The opportunities for certifications are up. Also, the opportunity for advanced placement and dual credit, those opportunities are up for kiddos. So we feel sure that the next time they put out fresh data, we should be even higher than these bars here.
Sorry.
Oh, that's just staff information.
But this is critical. I, I want you to look at this. And I know that it's hard to see. I can't even see it from here. But if you look at the district, so for teachers with years of experience from 11 to 20 and over 20 years, our percentages are like 56, 57%. And when you look at the state percentage, it's about 44%. So that's very important. More experienced teachers, we're holding on to them. That is a very critical stat whenever we start looking at, you know, staffing people. And so very proud of that.
Yeah, there that is.
Overall, very good job by everybody. Those are, those are impressive numbers.
And so here it is graphically, exactly what was on that form. Should have used the graphic and tried to read that. Here's our enrollment by program.
Okay, our ESL program is 6.2, where the state's at 20.6. We know that's a growing population, but that's where we were last year. And I think this year, our enrollment is pretty much flat in that population. There may be a few extra. Career and Tech Ed, we were at 30.7, where the state was at 27.6. And I know for a fact that that number is way up from that right there. Gifted and Talented, we're about 8.9, where the state is 8.1. We do have a tendency to have a lot of move-ins that are already qualified, gifted and talented. And then Special Ed is 8.8, where the state is 10.5. I will tell you, we've grown in that population tremendously this year. People hear about what our teachers, staff members in Wimberly do for kids. And it's amazing. Word gets out and certain programs grow. And Stephanie Norris will tell you that that is, we've had a surge of incoming kiddos in that population. Our teachers all across the board, Jen and in Special Ed, do a really great job with getting those kids on target, on grade level. And so you'll see growth there. And this is just a breakdown of all the kids per grade level. We kind of get to see what we look like, all of our numbers in each grade level compared with what the state has, and ethnic distribution, all of that kind of stuff. We wanted to put this out there to remind you that last time we were rated, we were rated an A. We are still continuing to shoot for, even though that, that's not in the picture right now. We're acting as if that is our goal, is to get where we would achieve an A if it were possible to get that this year.
This is 18, 19. One point away on closing the gap. I think that we are definitely above this. That should be three As across the board with this year's data. This relative performance that Dee has circled here, there's a note there. I can't read that, Dee, I'm sorry.
The district or campus overall percentage of economically disadvantaged is calculated based on the TSDS PNS October snapshot, the, what gets sent in from the district in October. The number of students in, in that population is kind of what is a part, a big part of that achieve, gap achievement category is. And so that's a population that we care deeply about and want to see them succeed. And so we do all we can to make sure that we're doing great things, not just in that program, but all programs. And thank y'all for your attention. And I know we went over 10 minutes.
Sorry.
Okay, thank y'all very much. Great presentation. Good numbers there. Look forward to hearing more about all that. So that's our report on the paper. Next up on the agenda is the first report. And Dwayne, you're going to be presenting?
Yeah, I hope that this works because this shouldn't take us long. So this is the School Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. And so the first rating began in fiscal year 2001, 2002. It's just, it's, it's a report for the financial health of every single school district in Texas. And so this is the 18th year for the school first report. FIRST stands for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. The primary goal is to achieve quality performance in the management of school districts' financial resources. The system is designed to encourage Texas public schools to better manage their financial resources to provide maximum allocation possible for direct instructional purposes. And so for the 2019-20 school year, we did get another superior rating. These are the ratings. So superior is between 90 and 100 points. And so we have, oh my gosh, how many years has FIRST been around, Emily? Eight. And so every single year, we've been superior?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Well, it wasn't called FIRST for 18 years. So anyway, putting you on the spot.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. FIRST hadn't been around for 18 years, but it's been called something else, okay? But we've always had a superior rating. This is statewide overall statistics for superior, above standard, mid-standard, and substandard achievement. This year, we scored 98 out of 100 points, which gave us the superior rating. This just gives you a quick overlay of.
Pardon me? What's up with the two points?
I'm fixing to show you. Maybe, maybe not. All right. No. So whenever you look at our first report, there are specific pages. And of course, we condense this because it's a pretty long report. But these are instructions, and this is going to be on our website, where you can find how ratings are assessed, pages five through seven, required disclosures on pages eight through nine, and then a glossary, which you definitely need for all the acronyms that we use, especially in school finance. So critical indicators, one through five, count as one point each. Failure to meet the requirements of a critical indicator will cause a school district to fail. And so there are solvency indicators, six through 15. These are 10 points each. And then financial competency indicators, 15 through 20. This is new, and it came in, in the 2020, 21 school year. So here's all the indicators, and this is very tough to see. The most important column is the score. Yes, we did, we got the full 10 points for indicators one, two, two A, two B, three, four, five. So we received all 10 points in those. Here, they show the points. Number 11 was the school district administration cost rate ratio equal or less than the threshold ratio. And since Moises isn't here, he had a little explanation. So you put me on the spot, Rob, and I don't have that explanation in front of me. So there's your two points.
I can explain it if you want.
Yes. Okay, so Emily, Emily can explain it.
Basically, it, our administrative expenses rose more than our attendance, so, or than our enrollment. So that, we just lost a little bit of point there. And that was really just because of the raise. So our, our costs went up because of the raise.
Yeah, because of our significant, because of the 8% raise.
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we did add safety, security. We added Amy. Although they're not administrators, we've added several staff to, to deal with that, with that population of kids. And so that's the first report. Now, if you want in great detail all of those indicators, I can pull up a PowerPoint with about 33 slides, and we can go through each individual.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Well, that was a good report. We're going to move on down to item five on our agenda, which is our special recognition section. Somebody come in? Are they waiting?
Uh-oh.
Oh my gosh, you're out there freezing? Oh my god. Oh, Charlene.
Come on in. Y'all can go ahead and front there.
You guys play a couple of sets of tennis before you came in, or what? Oh my gosh.
So we're on to our special recognition, and we have the representatives from the Wimberly Tennis Association with us. Charlene Myers, Joanna Wright. And thank y'all for being here. I'm going to turn over to Mr. York.
So tennis court lights. How long have they needed to be changed? For several years, right? Okay. So every year that you came to me, I'd always kind of make an excuse, we ain't got the money. Well, I tell you what, this year, we found the money, and look at the difference.
Got it, Ben.
And you guys donated $20,000. So this is a banner, as well as a check. I want you to hold that in. And Charlene, if you'll hold this in.
Okay.
Because we need to have a photograph. Oh my gosh, and we've got the actual check. This could be really good. We'll just put that up there. And we want you guys to hang this banner on the dance of the tennis courts. Wherever you want to.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks so much.
And if you need zip ties, just call me.
Yeah.
I'm sure Randy has tons of them. We cannot thank you guys enough. We cannot. And all the things that you've done for our tennis program. And I know that I came even before the COE, that agreement. And so this has been a long time relationship. And look at what we've got. We've got awesome facilities.
We absolutely do.
And just keeping them going. And you guys make a huge contribution to that. We just want to thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Is metal number something? Okay.
See this. Okay, we're going to move back on over to our agenda. And we've got item number six, which is our public forum. And I understand that we have no citizens' comments tonight, so we'll be able to dispense with that one. And we're going to move over to item number seven, which is our consent agenda. And was there some discussion about pulling item D off so we read that separately?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take a motion to consider items A through F and H.
I'll move.
Second. Motion in a second, a discussion.
I just had one little comment on the minutes to a correction. I think somewhere on there, Dottie, when you were talking about the committees, I think it says like inter, it's supposed to be inter-jurisdictional, and it says something else. I think it's just a, just a correction.
Thank you.
Okay, we can take a look at that. All right. So we've got a motion in a second. No further discussion. All in favor? Can you write in? Bring the room. Everybody on Zoom. It's unanimous. And item number G is a resolution. And I'd ask that that resolution be read. So can be considered by the board?
Resolution of the Wimberly Independent School District Board of Trustees, County of Hayes, State of Texas. At a lawfully called meeting on January 25, 2021, Wimberly Independent School District Board of Trustees does hereby make the following resolution regarding the granting of leave to employees of the Wimberly Independent School District. Whereas the district's Board of Trustees recognizes that the state of Texas and the United States government have declared disaster and emergency affecting all territory of the district regarding coronavirus COVID-19 and its potential spread, and continue to extend these declarations. Whereas the Board recognizes that COVID-19 is an unforeseen and unavoidable emergency of urgent public necessity, that the World Health Organization has declared COVID-19 a pandemic, and that additional emergency declarations have been and likely will continue to be issued in the coming days, weeks, and months. Whereas the Board and administration are following advice and directives from federal, state, and local authorities in responding to COVID-19. Whereas the Board has a substantial public interest in protecting the health and safety of its students, staff, and school community, and therefore desires to protect to the fullest extent possible the health and safety of students, staff, and the school community in light of COVID-19. Whereas in accordance with current public guidance issued on December 4, 2020 by the Texas Education Agency, requires that individuals in close contact with an individual who is confirmed positive for COVID-19, or individuals who themselves are symptomatic for or confirmed positive for COVID-19, must not be allowed entry at school, and if present on campus, must immediately return home and be quarantined for a minimum of seven days with a negative COVID-19 test and up to 14 days. Whereas due to the possibility of repeat exposure, employees have been or may be required to quarantine for periods after they have exhausted all available leave, including leave granted under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, codified at 20 CFR Part 826. Whereas at this time, the FFCRA is set to expire on December 31, 2020, and any employee who is not exhausted available leave under the FFCRA will no longer be eligible to utilize the FFCRA's paid leave protections beginning on January 1, 2021. Whereas the district's public purpose is served by promoting conscientious health choices by employees, including medical individual quarantines and leave as, as may be. and leave as may be necessary to protect students, staff, and the school community. Whereas employee benefits that help ensure employees can recuperate from COVID-19, isolate to avoid the spread of COVID-19, follow health officials' instructions, and generally help to protect the school community are essential in creating a school environment in which students can be successfully educated. Whereas the district benefits from employees not being at district facilities when exposed to ill from or recuperating from COVID-19 in accordance with health department instructions to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in the school community, because learning is negatively impacted when staff and students are ill with COVID-19. Whereas the board believes the public purposes described above are fulfilled by efficiently and effectively making certain delegations, as described more fully herein, to the superintendent to address this ever-changing emergency situation in the best interest of the health, safety, and well-being of its students, staff, school community, and the citizenship at large. And whereas the board continues to provide controls and oversight for the district, expenditures, and authority granted to the superintendent herein through requiring that the superintendent develop regulations, communicate to the board updates regarding use of leave, and costs related to the grant of authority. It is therefore resolved that the board finds a substantial public purpose exists in protecting the health and safety of its students, staff, and the school community, and in taking action to help ensure that the district and its community are prepared to the fullest extent possible to protect the health and safety of students, staff, and school community in light of COVID-19. COVID-19 Extended Leave Program. One, the board of trustees delegates to the superintendent the authority to grant paid leave to contract and non-contract employees for the following qualifying reasons. One, employee has been advised by healthcare provider, including Wimberly ISD's designated COVID nurse, to self-quarantine for reasons related to COVID-19. Two, is experiencing COVID-19 symptoms and is seeking a medical diagnosis or confirmation through an FDA-approved test. Or three, the employee is primarily responsible for the care of an immediate household member who has been advised by healthcare provider to self-quarantine for reasons related to COVID-19, or has experienced COVID-19 symptoms, and is seeking a medical diagnosis or confirmation through an FDA-approved test. Two, for employees who have not used any of their eighty hours of emergency paid sick leave, EPSL, under the FFCRA as of January first, twenty-twenty-one, COVID Extended Leave will be immediately available as of January first, twenty-twenty-one. Three, for employees who have used part but not all of their eighty hours of EPSL, the remaining unused balance of eighty hours will be available to the employee as of January first, twenty-twenty-one. Four, for all categories of employees, the superintendent shall require any employee requesting COVID Extended Leave to submit documentation that is in the superintendent's discretion sufficient to show the need for COVID Extended Leave based on one of the qualifying reasons above. Five, the board further ratifies the designation of any leave previously granted under provisions of the FFCRA based on the guidance of a registered nurse employed by Wimberly ISD as paid extended COVID leave, leave to the extent that any such leave would not otherwise qualify under the provisions of the FFCRA. Any leave designated under this provision shall be considered use of the employee's available EPSL solely for purposes of determining eligibility under the Extended Code Leave Program. The authority granted by this resolution is effective for the duration of the twenty-twenty-one school year unless the board takes action to authorize continuation for a longer duration, passed and approved by the Wimberly Independent School District Board of Trustees this twenty-fifth day of January twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Alan. Do we have a motion? Still move.
Again.
That motion to approve the resolution, a second and discussion. And vote on favor. Right hand, five in the room, two on the screen. Passes unanimously. Gonna move to our next item. It's our consent agenda. And are, anybody be opposed to us taking a break? Take a break at this time? Maybe, I don't know, ten minutes? Five, just five minutes? Okay, maybe seven-twenty-ish, where we can be.
Everybody on Zoom?
Wait, I'm sorry. Okay, back into open session at seven-twenty. And then we're gonna move to our reports section. The first report is our health and safety report, which I believe was in our packet. Is that right?
Yes.
It was emailed to us, maybe. Okay, no action required there. Next item on here is our CFO's report. And.
Good morning. Emily's ready.
And this is Emily. Could you please introduce yourself?
I'm Emily Verhollen. I need to check this out for those students to see me. Moises prepared these reports, per usual, that he wanted me to go over just to be clear, like, if you guys seem not here. And so the cash and investment balances of all the governmental proprietary funds as of December thirty-first was a little over sixteen million. And the general fund makes up forty-seven percent of that, and the capital projects fund makes up twenty-four percent. And the unaudited ending fund balance as of December thirty-first was a little over eleven million, which is about five point two six months. The general fund has collected forty-three point seven nine percent of budgeted revenue and spent thirty-four point two one of budgeted expenditures. The child nutrition fund has collected twenty-six point three eight percent of budgeted revenue and spent thirty point eight seven percent of budgeted expenditures. And the capital projects fund, down at the bottom of the first page, has expended one point four million in the current fiscal year. And the current thirty-seven thousand five point two expenditures of revenue. Second page, the third bullet gives an update on tax collections, which have increased since the end of last month. So we've collected about twelve point five million, representing forty-one point eight one percent of the levy, which is great, because it was less than one percent last month. So that has increased, and yeah.
Very good. Thank you. That's our report. Any questions related to that?
Thank you, Emily, for standing in. We appreciate it.
You did a great job.
Yes, nice. Okay, we'll move over to item C, which is our superintendent's report.
So the first thing on the, on my report requires some discussion if necessary, but definitely approval or disapproval. We're proposing general operating, committing some of our fund balance. So if you will go to this sheet that has a proposed general operating fund, committed fund balance. It is kind of a tally sheet of where we're at today. As per our auditor report, they gave you the same amount that we have reflected here, eight point seven, or eight million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in fund balance to date. That is four point two months of operational. And our three-month operational recommended by the auditor is six million, two thirty-six, four hundred and nine dollars, leaving us a balance of two million, five thirty-three, three seventy-four. And we're proposing that we commit this to future growth, to future capital outlay programs, to future construction. And so you asked the auditor the question, why are districts now doing this more frequently? It can simply be summed up by this. Once again, our legislators are discussing fund balance. As a, as a means of cutting state revenue, you will be required to use part of your fund balance, M and O, fund balance, as your, for funding for that particular year. Granted, there, there probably are a couple of school districts across the state that might have a year, year and a half fund balance. Well then, maybe the legislators need to target them, and not everyone with this blanket. But this discussion is a real discussion this year. It was brought up a little bit last session. Well, not last session, but the session before that. But I think it's very prudent for us to set this side back. It's called committed, which means that at any given point, given any special circumstance, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that we're a Robin Hood school, let's say enrollment drops dramatically, and we have to pull from fund balance to meet our obligation. You can pull back this commitment from capital outlay and reassign it to whatever you need that, those funds for. And so we feel like that right now, that we would like to recommend that we commit the two point five million of our fund balance to future projects. And I would need a motion, and.
The amount that we're talking about is two million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we commit.
Can we discuss before we make a motion? Or do you want to just make the motion?
I think we can discuss it after the motion's made, and if it's seconded, then we'll open it up to discussion.
I'd like to make a motion that we commit two million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. What's the word I'm listening to?
We, we commit that. It's committed a portion of our fund balance.
Yeah, so I make a motion that we commit two million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars of our fund balance.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commit to what? Do we say that in the motion?
We've committed to capital improvement project. We have to commit to this particular thing? Need to be a little more specific. So I would say capital outlay, construction projects for future growth of the district.
That is our motion.
We got a motion?
Okay.
I'll second for discussion.
Question is second, discussion.
But somebody else can go if they want.
No, or Lori, feel free to jump in.
I have some questions, but Lori, go ahead.
Okay, so just curious, this would include construction and/or capital land acquisition, or any kind of capital outlay that the district would want to undertake?
Yes, ma'am.
And is, would those future acquisitions basically be subject to board approval?
Oh, absolutely.
And my last question is, you know, before we allocate this full, or consider allocating this full amount, have we, you know, asked our teachers and faculty and staff if they have any immediate needs for supplies or any other materials or software training or anything like that, that we can use some of this money for, for classroom purposes immediately?
We have not specifically asked that question. We have just started the budget process. The principals have been directed to begin their campus budgets. And let's say that a department comes up with a specific need. I mean, if you remember, at one point in time, we, we bought, what's the term of the cutter for welding?
I have that.
Plasma cutter. An expenditure like that would fall under this. And so what most districts are doing is that they're putting it in that general category, because in central Texas, most of our school districts are growing. And so construction and capital outlay. Let's say that any expenditure comes up that we absolutely need academic instruction. Remember, this is M and O. And we can spend that money for those expenditures. So if something comes up. So if something comes up in this budget, you can, you can recommit five hundred thousand to that project and then just keep two million for the capital outlay. You have a lot of flexibility in this.
We can come next board meeting and remove this commitment.
You sure could.
Man, it's always good to look at the contrarian side.
Sure.
Through a decision like this, can you think of anything that we should be aware of when we make a decision like this?
When, when I first start, when we actually, this only happened two years ago, that we even had a three-month operating, okay? And I kept hearing of all these superintendents that were then starting to commit or to designate part of their fund balance for certain items. I never understood it, I never really wrapped my head around it. I was just hoping to hurry up and get to the three-month. We've now surpassed that and so now we're at that, we're now at that time that we could commit this. My biggest issue with this is the terminology and Emily can hopefully help me with this. You don't want to restrict it because that puts restrictions on you, am I correct?
Well, really, it all means the same thing, but it, the word restricted, you just don't like it as much.
We don't like the word restricted. So my colleagues in the training that I've had, you've got to be very careful with the terminology within a board, uh, motion. And so we've been told to use the word committed and then that gives you flexibility.
So in brief, to answer that question, I hear you say, you have numbers, but...
None at all, because you have flexibility with it.
And if I'm reading this correctly here, if, if we voted to commit this two point five, it's a change, we would still have four point two?
You have, what you have left is six point two million for your three months of operations. Yes, but you still have eight point seven million in your, in M and O fund.
Well, it just needs to a new line, so you've got the committed fund balance up here and then, uh...
I have a question in regards to that, the accounting process and... So if we move forward with committing these funds, then we create a new line item, basically, in the budget?
Um, not necessarily in the budget, but just, you know, if you look at the function to the financial report.
So what function does it end up falling under and does that actually get it out from under the state being able to show that as additional fund?
Okay, so...
That's where I'm going.
Absolutely. So we have really hashed this over for months and months. Because when, when we heard that this discussion was being had at the senate level, okay? And I'm just repeating what was told to me, at the senate level, we knew right then and there that because they've already had this discussion. Would, within the budgetary template, there be a formula where you plug in what your fund balance is? And it's compared to your three months or ninety day, maybe then extend it to, you know, another month or whatever. And then they would say, all right, so here's what your state funding would be, but because you have this, uh, you know...
Excess.
That excess, okay, and it's taxpayer money, it should go towards, uh, funding school operation on the M and O side. And, um, there's a lot of school districts that are fighting this like crazy because the unknowns today are very unknown. What if all of a sudden the minimum wage goes at fifteen dollars an hour? I spent two and a half hours with Tracy Ramsey for us to just try to wrap our head around what that would look like. Lexi, you know, as an HR director, not only does it affect the, the employees that are underneath that fifteen dollars? But then it gradually has a domino effect all the way to your teacher's salary scheme. So what is that amount of money? We don't even have a clue. And then the two biggest concerns that we have here in Texas, and I'll just sum it up with oil, period. What's fixing to happen? Pipeline, what's fixing to happen? We've got some unknowns. And so when your controller's telling you, you've got a deficit? And you're thinking five billion, then he's coming back and saying things look better because the oil price raised? And then all of a sudden, no, maybe it's going to be, I mean, wow, how do you budget when you're given all these different scenarios? It's really getting tough. Fund balance is important.
Important discussion.
Joe, may I ask some questions, please?
Sure.
So, um, to understand this correctly, um, amongst peers and colleagues. Uh, y'all have, uh, determined collectively that you would bring a recommendation to your governance bodies to make a, uh, a preemptive move on something that may or may not happen at the legislature. Am I understanding that correctly, Dwayne?
Um, yes and no. I think that he had always discussed, Randall and I, back when Randall was CFO. We had always discussed that once we reach that three-month threshold, it would be wise, that was years ago. It'd be wise to, you know, set aside some money, but not restrict the board that if an emergency did not come. So yes, it's been heightened by the discussions that I've had with my colleagues here recently. So I hope I answered your, your question.
Because, uh, my, yeah, 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 I, I mean, I understand that. I, uh, I also would kind of worry about the perception members in legislatures would have with, if every school district in the state, you know, goes to do this, kind of being something that they can point to to prove whatever point they're trying to, they're trying to prove. So perhaps that's something to take into consideration, maybe I'll discuss that as, as with your, uh, with your peers, Dwayne. Maybe had, I'd love to hear it, but if not, I'll go on to my next, uh, my next question, that was kind of more of a statement, but... You, you referenced the auditor. Have you talked to our financial advisor about this and any, and if there was any impact at all, uh, to our, uh, bond rating or future bond ratings that we may have? I know in my experience at the county, as our reserves grew, that became a, a very positive towards the interest rates, which we received on notes and bonds that the county saw.
So, um, we have been told by our financial advisor, and this goes back years ago, when Randall and I were talking about one of these days, we're going to have three, three and a half months, we're going to designate. But what will show up when we go out for a bond is that our M and O fund balance, no matter what you do with what portions, is going to be eight point seven million. And then they, they go into the minutia. What I will do is I will follow this up with Dan Wettmiller and have that conversation with him again.
That would make me feel really comfortable. I, you know, worked with Dan for a long time, have a lot of confidence in his opinion on these types of things. And when you made the comment about, uh, the auditor, uh, my auditor carries some value, uh, of course. But I would, I would carry a whole lot more value in, in Dan's opinion, our financial advisor's opinion than, than our, our auditor on this specific subject matter.
Sure, and I have no problem doing that, I'll report back to you on that.
So just for the, uh, uh, sake, I, Joe, I'm going to remove my second from that motion. Um, and, uh, I would like to hear, I'd like to hear Dan's opinion prior to, to moving forward. Unless there's some, unless there's some sense of urgency to do this today, Dwayne, that, that, uh, that I'm not aware of.
I think they're telling me...
But I withdraw my second, I withdraw the second.
Okay, well, I think they're telling me Rob actually seconded the motion. You're on mute. I couldn't hear you that time.
No, I said that, that's great that I couldn't, I didn't know if you, you picked up my second or Rob's. So, uh, I was just going to say I'm going to withdraw mine, if that's what you recorded, Joe.
Okay, thanks, yeah. Um, and I think we've got a motion and a second. I think we can, help me out on this, but I, I think we could table this to next month, even though we have a motion and a second, right? I think we could. Okay. I'll, I'll withdraw the motion in order to, uh, ask this, um, yeah. I'm going to ask, not the auditor, but, uh...
We're going to be asking, uh, Dan Wettmiller, he's our financial advisor. And, um, to ask him, especially what Will stated, uh, whenever you go out for a bond, fund balance is, is, is really a, a key. And how do they view that if you commit a certain part of your fund balance? Is that viewed differently than having a total of eight point seven? Or are they now going to say, well, you've got three months, that's still good, but, you know? I don't mind asking that question at all and if we can table this, we can sure do it.
Joe said, I don't see that this, I'm waiting for thirty days, get that data and come back and say, oh, problem.
I mean, if, and if we're, since we are going to, apparently it seems like we're going to table this, I would like to reiterate my, you know, request that, you know, we also look at what immediate needs that our teachers may have in the classroom right now. Um, and things that they may not have asked for because they thought money was really tight and they really could use certain supplies or a new set of books or a new set of something, um, or, you know, whatever our administrators might need as well. So I wouldn't, you know, throw that out there, um, for consideration for next month as well.
I mean, we can discuss this further if we're going to do it next month, but all of those items would fall under what we're committing this money for, so...
Those fall under M and O right now, Lori.
Whether, whether we do it or not, that money can still come from there if there's teachers that need...
Okay, my, I thought it was going specifically into a fund for capital improvements and construction.
Capital outlay. Yeah, I forget, anyway, but...
Okay, well, I guess I would like some legal clarification on what exactly it means that we're shoving this money into this.
I haven't forgotten to talk to Dan, we could ask him for the precise language. How we should commit the funds and then we can really make sure we put a point on this thing. Okay, um, I should remember this from my Casby training, because I took one on Robert's rules, but there's some way to... Okay.
Not necessarily, we could possibly table definitely a motion for the next meeting, but for ease, I will withdraw the motion.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. Motion's withdrawn and I just request that we revisit this next month, uh, informally and, uh, without, uh, formal motion to table it to that certain date.
In fact, I, I will probably invite Dan, uh, to come to our next meeting if...
We have to pay him to be here?
Um...
If we do, then we can just give a...
I mean, I don't want him to come if we don't pay. I know that all works and...
And Dan's, uh, Dan's not paid that way, he's paid if, uh, the district sells the bond.
Yeah, so he, he'll tell us what we want to hear, no, I'm just kidding. No, I'd love for Dan to come, that'd be great, all right. All right. So, um, that was first part of your report, um, estimated closeout, two thousand eighteen capital projects, if something on that?
Yeah, so, uh, I shared with you guys a worksheet, uh, that we've been meticulously going over, especially, uh, the last three, four months, uh, with Bob. And making sure that, um, all dollars are accounted for expenditures. Uh, the one thing that we have been carrying for quite some time, well, since the beginning, is our retainage. Uh, we've been very, very conservative with that retainage number. And now that we're coming down to the bottom of this, um, project, you can see that all projects have been completed. Uh, with, except for the, um, uh, oh golly, the athletic storage building, uh, which is in the process. But if you look at page two, the funds that we had available uh, after retainage, uh, was paid, uh, was a, a pretty good chunk of money. And so this second, uh, portion of this worksheet, and Moises didn't give me the middle page. So let's just refer to the second. Yes, it's this, uh, well, no, they've got that on their worksheet. Uh, it says second page. Yes, that's it. So, uh, as we discussed, um, for the last couple of months, that we were going to have some money, uh, available uh, for other expenditures, as long as they fell within the proposition language. So these are the things that we've been able to, uh, utilize this money for. We purchased, uh, the, the land, um, just outside our office here. Um, we, uh, had a, an appraisal done on that property, uh, that expenditure is being paid. Uh, we are anticipating that if we were to go out for land for the baseball softball parking lot of three acres, it would be somewhere in that neighborhood. The athletic storage building is a hundred thousand. Our air filtration system came in at four hundred and thirty seven thousand. Our tennis court lighting came in at ninety four, uh, almost ninety five thousand, uh, with a twenty thousand dollar donation from the tennis association. The COVID technology bulk purpose, uh, purchases, uh, we were supposed, we were reimbursed, uh, by, uh, the CARES fund uh, on this expense, we at one time had this in that, uh, list of expenditures. Uh, the high school, um, this is the high school band cabinetry. Pardon me?
Junior high.
Junior high, I'm sorry, junior high. And then we have a minor track repair, that even if we place this into that list, we would still have, going back to the first page, we would still have seven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars left in our bond fund. So, very good news, uh, very pleased with, um, you know, working through these expenditures that, uh, we've been able to pay for above and beyond, uh, what we did with the bond funds. And so I just wanted to report on this. And, uh, Moises had prepared a couple of other, uh, tables that he was going to go over and I just told him to please give me a summary.
All right. Do you need any action on this?
No, I don't. This is just a report.
Do you have any questions related to this?
Dwayne, is this where it's appropriate to ask a question about the, uh, about the, uh, reimbursement sheet? What has been reimbursed and what is not going to be reimbursed, uh, sheet that you, uh, sent out in the, uh, agenda?
Yeah, so the COVID...
Or is that a...
Yes. Emily is going to have to answer that question or Moises will have to answer your question because I'm afraid it is split up into so many categories, Will. I would hate to speak to each individual category. I know that Dee, uh, worked with Moises on that.
Yes, sir.
And I know that, uh, myself, Emily, um, unless Emily...
Yes, I'm thinking maybe, you know, that group can just get together and, uh, just maybe give us an update on that.
Sure, Will.
Next time, uh, so we, you know, we don't play by the spot.
Sure, sounds good.
Great. Is that okay, Will?
Yeah, and, and, and I was just, I may be on the wrong item, Joe. I was looking, there was a, a one-pager that says total reimbursed and total not reimbursed. It was, uh, three hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars and then four hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars and some change. and some change on both of them, if that rings a bell to anybody.
Yeah, we know, I know exactly what.
And my only, my, okay, my only question was, Joe, was uh, you know, why weren't we reimbursed for some of the custodial supplies, taxi glass, technology, et cetera, on the on the non-reimbursed part, the FY nineteen through through twenty, FY twenty through twenty one? I I didn't know if we ran out of money or 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 why that wasn't reimbursable. But that was my only question and that can certainly wait, it's a good amount of money though.
More of a general question, okay.
I can like speak a little bit to it if you want, but I don't have every, I don't have all the details off the top of my head. But so far we've uh, received reimbursement through three different um, grants. And the only reason why there's that line item for not reimbursed is because that funding just hasn't become available yet. But we are anticipating and hoping that something will come up. So we're tracking what we haven't um, been reimbursed for yet so that we can submit for reimbursement for those things as funding becomes available. But right now we've applied for everything that's been available to us and there have been limits, not based on, um, not based on anything that we've done, but just based on the funding that was available, there it was limited what was available to us and we applied for the maximum that we could receive. And there have been some.
That's very helpful, Emily, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That helps understand the whole process. Good, Dwayne, anything else on that item? Okay, let's conclude your report section. Uh, the next one would be by Dee, which is my report. And uh, we're gonna read into the record, the annual report on board training hours. And I'll turn that over to Alan.
The following is the annual announcement of continuing education of board members. Under state Board of Education rule, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. The board president, Joe Malone, is required to facilitate the announcement of the name of each board member who has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education and is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. The requirements for training are measured as of the first anniversary of the date of the trustee's election or appointment or two-year anniversary of his or her previous training as applicable. There are seven training areas for board member continuing education. One, local district orientation. Two, orientation to the Texas Education Code. Three, post legislative update to the Texas Education Code. Four, team building. Five, additional continuing education. Six, evaluating student academic performance and setting goals. Seven, identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking and other maltreatment of children. To the extent applicable to board members, the completion or deficiency asked to required training will be announced. The board members who still have time remaining to complete required training and or who have scheduled timely training and those who have not yet scheduled the training will be announced. Please note Lexi Jones's first year anniversary is November twenty twenty one. At the conclusion of this announcement, any board members training in excess of the continuing education requirements will be announced. Local district orientation. The following first year board members have completed the local district orientation training. Will Conley, Lexi Jones. Orientation to the Texas Education Code. The following first year board members have completed the orientation to the Texas Education Code training. Will Conley. The following first year board members have time remaining to complete the orientation to the Texas Education Code and have not yet scheduled this training. Lexi Jones. Post legislative update to the Texas Education Code. No board members were required to complete post legislative update to the Texas Education Code training for the time period covered by this announcement. Team building. The following board members have completed the annual team building training. Joe Malone, Tracy Maxwell Phillips, Rob Campbell, Lori Olson, Will Conley, Lexi Jones, Ken Strange. Annual continuing education. The following board members have completed the additional continuing education requirements. Joe Malone, Tracy Maxwell Phillips, Rob Campbell, Lori Olson, Ken Strange and first year board member Will Conley. The following board members have time remaining to complete the additional continuing education requirements and have not yet scheduled this training. First year board member Lexi Jones. Evaluating student academic performance and setting goals. The following board members have completed the biennial training on evaluating student academic performance and setting goals. Joe Malone, Tracy Maxwell Phillips, Rob Campbell, Lori Olson, Ken Strange and Will Conley. The following first year board members have time remaining to complete the biennial training on evaluating student academic performance and setting goals and have not yet scheduled this training. First year board member Lexi Jones. Identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking and other maltreatment of children. The following board members have completed the biennial training on identifying and reporting abuse and trafficking. Joe Malone, Tracy Maxwell Phillips, Rob Campbell, Lori Olson, Ken Strange, Will Conley. The following first year board members have time remaining to complete the biennial training on identifying and reporting abuse and trafficking and have not yet scheduled this training. First year board member Lexi Jones. Exceeding required continuing education. The following board members have exceeded the required amount of continuing education training. Joe Malone, one additional hour. Lori Olson, half an additional hour. Ken Strange, one additional hour. First year board member Will Conley, one point seven five additional hours.
Thank you, Alan. Appreciate that. Good job, everybody. So next we're gonna look at the agenda calendar. Anybody have anything that they would like to add? I know we talked about a couple of things that we're gonna be looking at for both the next meeting and then possibly a a meeting down the road and some some reporting. Okay, hearing nothing else, uh, let's uh, take up our closed session and I'll read this. The board, the board may adjourn into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven one. The board may then re-enter into open session for further discussion and necessary action. Deliberation may include security devices or security audits, Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven six and Section five five one point zero eight nine. Personnel matters, Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven four to include, but not limited to new hires, terminations, employee discipline, superintendent's evaluation process and review. Uh, deliberation regarding real property, Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven two in consultation with the district's attorney, Texas Government Code Section five five one point zero seven one. The time is now seven fifty nine and we'll adjourn into closed session at this time.
Okay, welcome back into open session. The time is 8:51 and I'm going to ask if we have any motions.
I would move that we offer non-contractual employment to Andrew Heeler and Jennifer King.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you. See you.
Thanks guys, good seeing everybody.
I'll take care.